Meeting for the Aridale County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, June 2, 2020. And if you can run through the agenda, any adjustments?
No adjustments to the agenda, Chairman Mallory.
All right.
Riveting agenda it is.
This will probably be the quickest pre-agenda we've had in a long time.
It's gonna be a long one. Got an appointment with the Aridale County Child Futility Prevention folks and a report you got in your materials, and I'm sure they'll run through that at some length. Public hearings, okay. Matthew, you got Deborah Draper, Draper Management LLC, 19.5 acres. You wanna tee that up?
It's pretty much a layup. It is.
Yeah, this one, 7-0, Planning Board in support of it, staff supports it. The, um, there's been no opposition to date. The, um, if it's the land use plan, I will point out, it's been a little while since I've brought this up, and I apologize for our lengthy motions that you guys have to read, but, you know, that's statute-driven. And then this one's a little extra confusing because we are having to amend the land use plan, which the statutes a couple of years ago basically say now, i-if you're approving a rezoning that doesn't fit exactly in the land use plan, it dof-and if you want to approve it, it has to amend the land use plan. Where in the past, if it went outside the land use plan a little bit, we didn't worry about it. We figured we'd catch that next time we update the land use plan, but the new rule is it updates it basically immediately. So that, of course, adds almost a whole other sentence to that motion. But again, this one, staff supports, matches the plan, and Planning Board supported it with no opposition.
Right. I'm good with making that motion. Yeah.
All right, well, I think-
That's real leadership here.
Slam dunk on that one. And you might as well stay up here.
That's real leadership here. Seven O from the planning board.
Okay, second is a public hearing for consideration of text amendments to the land development code reference to solar farms, which are not solar farms anymore. They're solar, what is it, energy? What are you calling that? Put you on the spot.
Yeah. Yeah, solar energy systems. Yeah. And this one, you guys should be pretty familiar with. We've kicked this one around quite a bit. We've got everything that's been asked for as far as changing it from the quasi-judicial Board of Adjustment to legislative with this, this board. We strengthened up our financial guarantees for the, uh, decommissioning if that was to happen, and we've made some other slight changes as far as a 50-foot buffer for perennial streams. We added that in there. And, you know, I will, I will point out, the state is actually working, I think by January 1st of 2022, they're looking at coming up with some of their own regulations that would apply to the decommissioning. They're gonna be looking at the hazardous material aspect, and they're gonna be diving into it a little bit, too. So this, I mean, we'll probably be amending it again as the technology changes here before too long and as other state, um, regulations come down the pipe. So this is one that just seems to come around every couple of years. And the Economic Development Task Force reviewed it and recommended approval.
Are there any questions or comments?
I think we've, we've thoroughly vetted this particular-
All right.
Thank you.
Then the big, big dog. Public hearing on the budget.
Okay, so tonight we will have our public hearing on the presented budget that we had at our last meeting. There are a couple of things that I just wanna draw your attention to. At our workshop that we had, we discussed looking at, and we're still working on the rescue funding. So we could do one of two things with the rescue funding, is we could go ahead and have the public hearing based on what's in there with the need to come up with a new funding formula, but we will get all the details of the funding formula and hopefully, hopefully get everything solidified and done before the board's approval. So we can do that because we're still working on the details of it and trying to get information from the rescue entities. So that is something that we're still working on, but the public hearing, what is already in the budget packet, and the fact that we need to come up with a new funding formula, that is something that we could go ahead and discuss, and the, and the details of that and trying to mirror as closely as possible with the fire funding formula and kind of the same premise with that. So just know that that is not finalized, but we will have that finalized before the budget is adopted, hopefully on June the 16th. Ms. Cheek is here, and she can kinda go over the details and some highlights, and then if there are any questions, then we can certainly follow up with those as well.
I've laid out all of the, um, the funds, everything that we worked through in the workshops and the amounts of each of those. Would you like for me to read through that at this point?
Dear God, no.
Okay. Basically, I'll highlight the amount of the, uh, the budgets for the general fund and for the all-county Fire Protection Service District. I will talk about the tax rates and the tax valuation and the collection amounts that that is based on. I will also touch on the fact that we do have a new funding formula for the schools. Uh, if you would like for me to detail that out by school system, I can, or I can just give that to you in total. Do you have a preference on how you'd like that presented?
I'd like to see it, I'd like to see it detailed as far as overall, that 44% does not include debt, and I'd like to make sure we elaborate on the fact that this education is still getting about half of every penny we bring in.
Yes, sir.
And I wanna make sure we emphasize that the Aridale Stateful Schools ask us to change their funding formula.
Okay.
They're still being a little disingenuous as to saying we should cut their budget or change it upon their request, and we didn't.
Okay, I will address that.
Okay, you and Ms. Jones want to point out, the Stateful Record Landmark made a mistake in their article today.
Yes, sir, I will.
Okay.
I'll do that, thank you.
Raising taxes by three cents.
Yes. And I will say that I did contact the editor as soon as I saw that thinking Mr. Norman had turned our attention, and they have already corrected that and printed a, um, explanation and corrected the article, it's already published.
Did they know who you were?
Excuse me?
Did they know who you were?
Yes, they knew, they knew, yes. So there were, there are various errors that were in that, and I have asked them to correct those, and the redaction and the correction did seem to be accurate.
Are you gonna do an intro to the budget opening, or you wanna elaborate on that later? I think it's important, some of the, some of the things like our position in the state, our tax rate compared to the other hundred counties, you know, some of the highlights of just your message that you gave the first night of your budget message. I think y'all disagree with me if I'm wrong, but some of those things, I think, need to be highlighted at seven.
I can, I can, I can highlight-
We should be proud-
-from the budget message, and then Ms. Cheek can go-
We should be proud of our positioning in the state and all that we, all our responsibilities and obligations, what we've been able to juggle with the revenue streams available. I just like to see you highlight that.
Okay, I can do that.
As long as we don't try to put too much out in front of people, they won't understand it, you know what I mean?
Right, right.
Absolutely. I'll, I'll hit the high points from the budget message, and then Ms. Cheek can go through a little bit more of the detail, and then we can open it up for questions in the public hearing, if that's okay with the board.
Thank you.
Good deal. Just to manage expectations, you do know a rumor makes it around the world three times before the truth gets out of bed. You put it in print, and four years from now, you'll be dealing with it.
I think the issue sometimes is when they sit and, and, and they get the budget, and then they sit and listen to the discussion, that's a moving target, you know? And sometimes I think it's premature and-
Well, this is, this is the record in landmark, right?
Correct.
Well, see, they weren't there. They had no one there, their budgets. And the free news had-
Yeah, that's true.
-Carissa. On the first day.
She hadn't been awarded her son of all, nobody claimed Michael's supposed to be.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding the budget public hearing that we can answer?
So we're not making any adjustments relevant to the- Discussion about the cuts.
Uh, all of those cuts and all of the things that were already changed as part of the budget workshop will be reflected in the budget ordinance that you will approve at our next meeting on June the 16th. But all of those cuts are already taken care of, and any of those changes that the board made that they agreed to, that's already being, that will be reflective. So that will, that will already be done. The only thing that is left that we are due back to get to you is the finalized funding agree, funding formula for the rescue. That's, that's the last thing that we need to get back to you.
So the corrected amounts have been given to all department heads? The corrected budget amounts and adjustments that were not reflected in their budget?
Yes, that has already, that has already been sent out, and that just, that just impacted one department, and that's already been sent out, and conversations have been had, and everybody is, is aware of what the budget is. That was an error on our part, that's been corrected, and that's been clarified. That was done last week.
We'll tee you up at the seven o'clock hour. And admin matters, we have one. That's the John Ferguson's request on the local match.
Correct. And I think he will be coming at the seven o'clock, from what I understand, to make that request. Is that correct? Okay, he may not. So would you like for me to go ahead and present that one, on his behalf?
Well, yeah, plan to. It's pretty straightforward, it's a 10% match, we're splitting it.
It is. It's, it's a 10% match that we split, split 50-50 with the city of Statesville. The amount equates to $4,265, which is the county's portion.
I have one quick question for the end of this. The 16th falls during the middle of my family vacation. Would it be the pleasure of the board that I drive back for that meeting, or would it be acceptable if I were to call in?
If you don't call in, I would recommend that we have a psychiatric evaluation of the Commissioner Bowles.
Well, because I am gonna follow in your footsteps.
Well, I would probably be in flip-flops and smell like a banana pudding, but, uh, either way-
Please call in.
Okay.
I have to sit beside you.
Okay. But that would be greatly appreciated if you guys would allow me, I guess, if we call it recuse, you'd recuse me or whatever, and let me call in would be great. And save me 400 miles of driving and taking an extra vehicle to the beach.
I'm doing it because I don't want you to contribute to global warming by having burning extra fossil fuels to be-
Well, see, I wanna do it because I'm, I'm the official social distancing police with my families. I wanna make sure they're-
For the greater good, we will-
Thank you.
Cede to your request.
Thank you for allowing me.
Chairman, y'all need Mr. Ferguson, or does anybody have questions that we need him, or do you want that to end, if you call him if we think we need him at seven?
I don't think he needs to be.
He doesn't need to be. It's straight up 10% match.
Yeah, well, consent?
Consent.
Just remind our folks at the Airborne Commission, after their last request for money, we said, "Well, you know, this never ends." Okay. I mean, I understand we do it, but it's not like that. That's the only money we give those folks.
Okay, we already put out the announcements to boards and, on boards and vacancies. Were those not gonna be heard?
We are still having some that are trickling in, so we hope to have them ready by the second meeting in June because the appointments will be effective the 1st of July. So we have a few boards that we're still trying to get all the applications and everything in.
This is not a public comment period? New business? Probably just give a quick update on the census. We're actually doing pretty well. We are the eighth most responsive county in the state.
Go Aridale County.
Really? Yeah. Terms of call-in or internet, or mail-in, I believe that's also included. But we, we have about five outliers there that are in the low 40s, and we're in the mid 50s as an average. They're in Statesville and Mooresville, and I've spoken to Coste and Bron about redoubling their outreach. They're well aware of that issue, therefore.
I, I don't know if it'd be under unfinished or new business or whatever, but, you know, we've had two, uh, two groups of so-called protesters or whatever, um, walk through downtown Statesville. On the video that I saw, they were on the sidewalk, did not obstruct traffic, did not offend people, did not destroy property. Police officers walked with them, and that's the way it's supposed to be done. And I certainly would like to recognize, you know, I'm not sure who the leadership was that put it together, but that's the way to do it right. And I think everybody is more open to conversation in that sort of environment, as opposed to one where finger-pointing and pushing and just destroying other people's property. So I think that says a lot about, about, about all of us, 'cause I don't know anybody that thinks, "Oh, the policeman should've, should've put his neck, his knee on the guy and killed him." I mean, I've not heard anybody in the whole United States of America say that, but for the folks that wanted to, to emphasize the point that those things do happen and they're concerned about it, I thought our people handled, I thought the citizens who were, who wanted to do the protest handled it very well, and I just think that's worthy of our
Well, and I think a lot of that groundwork really was done by our law enforcement agencies across the board, together with the group of police and communities together, packed, that got together after, and I believe it was the Trayvon Martin, uh, and got the community together, and had a dialogue ever since. And so that's what's supposed to have happened three, four years ago in all communities. And I think, and just commend all the different parties that have worked to make that a reality and to listen and share their concerns. So it's, uh, it's not as if they followed up words with action, as opposed to just saying they're gonna do something and then did nothing. Didn't change any policies and forces, how to hold to use. All right.
And, uh, I know we got two law enforcement officers here. I know you guys don't call, and we appreciate what y'all do also.
All right. Any managers report?
The only thing that I have to report is just to announce the, we're gonna do another round of mass testing for the community, and that will begin tomorrow, tomorrow, June the 3rd, which is on a Wednesday. That will be at Mooresville High School, and then Thursday, June the 4th, would be at Signal Hill Mall, and those will be from 8:00 a.m. until 12:15 p.m. This is our health department, they're doing this mass testing sites, and this-
How is that communicated to the public?
We have sent out press releases, we have put it on Facebook, we have, we have sent it on every media outlet that we have access to.
There, there's a large digital file, files are driving.
There is. So we're, we're really pushing the information out to make sure people know, and really, this testing is for individuals with symptoms that are suggestive of COVID-19, for those individuals that are close contacts of known positive individuals that have tested positive for COVID-19, and then that high-risk population. And we will, we're doing two more. We did two rounds last week of mass testing. We had 555 individuals that were tested, and then we're gonna do tomorrow, Wednesday and Thursday of this week, we'll do another mass testing.
Are all those results back?
No, they are not back yet. I do not think, I think there are a few that are still coming in, but the majority of them, I think, are back, 'cause it takes three to four days, depending on when we get them to the lab.
We're still at seven, and seven hospitalized.
Correct.
So we're on the upper end of work. We've been five to seven for a long time, and seven's on the upper end, but good gosh, if it's taken the, you know, taken some of the restrictions off, just makes us go from averaging five to seven to averaging seven or eight, you know, we're good.
But I think it's important to note, we are doing more testing, so we will-
Our, our test numbers are gonna go up, that's a function of testing. Hospitalizations are a function of-
Correct.
Who's got it?
Correct. But we will probably see more positive tests as a result of these mass testing-
Sure.
-sites that we're doing and, and efforts that we're doing. So we will probably see positives go up as well, but that's because we're doing more testing.
And I think Saturday for the state was the biggest jump.
Was the biggest jump yet.
That was in just positive cases as a result of testing.
Right.
And it, and if that's all the jumps, then we're pretty much, pretty much there.
When the hospitals call us and say, "Whoa, boys."
Right.
That's, you could say it's too late at that point, but to me, that, the hospital, number of people in the hospital, that's the number, if that one starts going up, we need the, we need the talking out.
And, and the primary focus was flattening the curve. We have done that. Mission accomplished.
There was no curve.
Um, one thing that I think it's important to note is restrictions have been relaxed. We're in phase two. Possibility of moving to phase three is on the horizon, but we don't need to become complacent and act like it's not there. We still need to do our hand washing, we still need to use our face coverings when we're going out in public, and, you know, we still needed social distance, which is what we're doing, doing here, and, and we still need to be cognizant of that and do what we need to do to keep not just ourselves, but our community safe. And I just wanna point that out, that, you know, you can still go about your, your lives and you can be safe and do what is appropriate, and we need to make sure that everybody is doing that.
I've heard you told us that's what you're doing. I thought you had Joe in timeout.
We're, we're staggering people strategically throughout the audience.
I've enjoyed distancing from Jamie.
Have we received anything from the state telling us where we are in terms of percentage of tests? You get this, we really don't have visibility of the ratio of positives to those tested at state level. They've never broken that down for the county. You look at all the other counties, and you go on the state website, and you can see the map, and you can toggle between total number of cases, and you, you also ask for per capita, which is really a more meaningful number. And Carroll County compares very favorable in terms of per capita cases. It's like 15 per 10, 15 per 10,000. And, uh, the Gaskin County's like 14, and Catawba's now about 13. It used to be much smaller. They're, they've had a fairly large jump. But other counties like Wilkes-Barre, it's like 70-some-odd. You can tell where they have either congregant care facilities that have had outbreaks or these-
Meat pack problem.
Yeah. Throughout the state, and they're significant. Kamara County has 400, upper 400, almost 500 cases. So we're, we have really done well in terms of our population, and it continues to be split evenly among the three, north, central, and southern districts based on per capita. It's tracking that. It's not like there's one area that's got a lot more than another, although the south started out there.
I'd like to bring your attention to the Tuesday night lights that you're sitting under this evening, first meeting with the LEDs installed. Much cooler. Yes. And we expect, uh, savings in the power bill as well. So we're not just out here spending just to be spendthrifts. We're trying to have ongoing savings on the electric bill. Looks good, very professional.
Even Marvin looks good.
So who, when do we start hatching chickens?
Start doing what? Hatching chickens.
Hatching chickens. That'll be forthcoming.
Okay. Then we have two items for a closed session. One is attorney-client pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection 83. The other is personnel pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection 86. So we're now, remove closed session, we'll move to the South Wing Conference Room, and there will be some rituals there as well. Matthew?
Matthew?